I would like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Motion passes. I will. Pledge of allegiance, please.
For the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total two hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Motion passes. Remarks of visitors. We have none. Go right on to bids, engineering and professional services on call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Um, for your consideration tonight is something we've not ever done before, but I took, uh, a cue from our friends in Jefferson County. Uh, they have an on-call service that they use for professional services like engineering, and I would very much like to have this opportunity for my staff and I to, have the same convenience. So what I did is I, I, I published a request for proposals, um, allowed interested parties, interested firms to submit their qualifications, uh, to, for a total of nine different disciplines. You have those disciplines, um, in my memorandum. Uh, and what I've done is, uh, I've, I've got listed all the folks that, um, that have replied, uh, and that, um, met the, um, at the requirements of the RFQ. Uh, we've got some really good folks, uh, on here, some people that we've not used before. I'm excited to use a number of them. I've gotten really good, uh, reference from many of these folks. Um, I think they're going to make our lives a lot easier when it comes to resolving these issues. Um, like has been mentioned, uh, in the past, um, sometimes you just need to call in a specialist. And I think we've been a little bit reluctant to do that. Um, this allows us, um, the convenience of selecting, uh, these specialists from this predetermined list. And, uh, we can utilize them for, uh, the services as, uh, outlined. So I'm happy to, um, answer any questions. Of course, this list is not, um, exclusive to the public works department. I want to make that clear too. So if Parks Department needs, um, a firm with these, uh, skills or experience, if the library has a problem and needs, uh, a firm to come in and help them with a, a project or priority, um, they'll all have, uh, the ability to, to utilize this list. I'm happy to take any questions.
Go ahead. This list versus, uh, would that kind of eliminate bidding things out? Or would it just make things more a timely fashion and it would require that?
I, I think it's the latter, um, councilman. I think what this does is, uh, those things that come up, uh, in the middle of the week, we get a homeowner that's got a stormwater problem. And, uh, I can tell you if, if it's a little five thousand dollar stormwater fix and I need some engineer drawings to, to help my crew or to help a, a contractor to fix it. Um, if I did an RFQ just for that, I would not get a single response. And I've tried it. I've, I, we've tried those. You just don't get them. So this is going to be for that little stuff, uh, big things like, um, STP projects or the, the downtown, uh, road and, uh, corridor improvements, you know, that, that was visioned, envisioned in the Maine to Mississippi plan. Those will still need to be, in my opinion, um, sent out for request for proposal so that the most qualified individual, and we'll do interviews and the whole shebang. Uh, but that's small stuff, those things that are councilmen and constituent complaints and concerns that we just need a hand on. That's actually going to come into, into play.
And we're, we're good. We don't have a, the dollar amount that we have to stay under or it's more emergency project specific type things, uh, like storm blows through, we need limbs and we're, we're okay on the legal side, but Brian?
Yes, I believe so. I mean, there, there may be specific projects that I would need to examine, um, against our ordinances directly. Uh, but in concept, I think it's, it's, uh, it's doable and has its benefits to the city as Matt described.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Hey, uh, Greg, I know this is like a trial. Um, I like to see it expanded. I, I have firsthand experience in this and, um, we're not bypassing council or the government body. We still vote on things as a budgetary item.
Correct.
It just allows more flexibility to get things done faster. I use on-call services quite a bit, Kevin, and it is an asset at the county. I kid you not. Um, and as big as we're getting at Festus, I can't imagine why we would not utilize this and grow this to where we can really see improvement fast.
I don't see this list as, uh, tonight, and this is the list forever and ever. Uh, firms change, uh, disciplines change, um, and, uh, I see it as a living document. Um, we can, we can bring amendments to the list to council, uh, but for the most part, the, this is, this is the, the first, uh, serving of firms that would allow us for any of these nine disciplines to be able to pick up the phone and say, we need some help taking a look at this.
Matt, are, uh, all of these that you have listed are willing to be on, on the, on-call list?
Yes, sir. They're all very, very excited. I could tell you, I've, I've, uh, given quite a few tours and lots of telephone calls and the folks are real excited to get, to get the business.
That's good.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid for the engineering and professional services on call.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded.
Thought we can just do a consent.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Ordinances and resolutions. Tonight we have bill forty-seven fifty-seven on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven fifty-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Midwest Regional Bank for depository services, incorporating said contract in RFP proposal as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven fifty-seven is now open for discussion. Could I have the staff report, please?
Michelle's done a lot of the work on this, um, and I will give her the opportunity to come up and talk. We did have four respondent, uh, banking firms. Uh, we reviewed all of their proposals and Midwest, who is our current, uh, bank, uh, came out the best. Michelle, if there's anything you'd like to share with council.
How do you, is this already on?
It's already on.
Okay, cool. Okay. Uh, first off, I'd like to, uh, thank Matt Unryan for helping me out with the RFP. Um, I've been under a lot of stress, uh, taking on the new finance director's position, so, um, working a lot of hours. Matt, uh, did some research. We had already had an RFP previously when we did this back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, but we kind of streamlined it a little bit, uh, more readable, uh, for bidders. And, um, I just would like to thank him for that. And, uh, Greg helped out. Me and him both kind of dug into all of the, uh, the banking institutions that responded to our RFP. Um, basically it came, it came down to two, um, and so we dug into those two more. And I have my staff report here. I don't know if you guys have any particular questions that you'd like to ask me. Um, I think it's pretty well outlined on who we selected and the reason why. Can I take any questions?
Yeah, I did notice that there was a monthly maintenance fee. Is that they, will that be charged every month or is that just as needed when we?
Okay, there is no monthly maintenance fee, not with Midwest Regional.
One of them did propose a monthly. We, that was, that was probably a shot in the foot right off the bat where, when they were talking about maintenance fees, so.
Yeah, that one had to have like a two million dollar, uh, reserve to cover those maintenance fees.
Michelle, it looks like you did a lot of work on this. As is evidenced by the number of pages and, um, it looks, it, uh, pardon me.
About a thirty-page packet.
At, at least, at least, yeah. So, I mean, the rates look good and, um, every, every part of it that I could decipher look as, thanks for your time doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any councilman that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven fifty-seven for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven fifty-seven for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven fifty-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Midwest Regional Bank for depository services, incorporating said contract and RFP proposal as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven fifty-seven has passed. We also have bill forty-seven fifty-eight on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven fifty-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with the Jefferson County Public Sewer District, the Festus Crystal City Sewage Commission, and the city of Crystal City to transfer the sewage treatment plant and systems owned and operated by the Festus Crystal City Sewage Commission for the benefit of cities to the Jefferson County Public Sewer District, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill number forty-seven fifty-eight is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor, city council, uh, the ordinance in front of you this evening consummates, um, uh, the discussions that we've been having with the Jefferson County Public Sewer District. Uh, obviously our Festus, Crystal City, Twin City Sewer Commission and the city of Crystal City, uh, to transfer the ownership and operation of the sewage treatment plant.
Is there any discussion? If not, is there any councilman that'd like to have this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven fifty-eight for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven fifty-eight for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven fifty-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with the Jefferson County Public Sewer District, the Festus Crystal City Sewage Commission, and the city of Crystal City to transfer the sewage treatment plant and systems owned and operated by the Festus Crystal City Sewage Commission for the benefit of the cities to the Jefferson County Public Sewer District, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
No, I support it, but.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven fifty-eight has passed. New business. And that is West Main Street Water Main Project Phase One.
Yes, sir. Mayor and city council, uh, my staff report is in the packet, uh, but let me give a kind of a larger, uh, uh, this, just kind of a blanket overview of what we're talking about here. Uh, phase one of West Main's reconstruction is ongoing. Uh, that is the mess right out front, uh, right out the front door. Um, with that project, which is, uh, the transportation side of it is eighty-twenty, uh, through the STP grant that we received from the state of Missouri, uh, and federal highway administration. Um, the water main project, uh, and there is water main replacement, uh, as part of this, um, is included, uh, and that is a hundred percent on the city. Uh, as we've begun the demolition and the excavation, um, the original replacement of the water main stopped in the six hundred block of West Main Street. There's a large box culvert that extends, uh, running basically, uh, north-south, uh, underneath, uh, West Main Street. Um, and because of that and the cost of doing a directional bore to replace the line underneath the box culvert, uh, the rest of the water main was not anticipated to be replaced. As we have done the excavation, we've discovered that in two thousand and seven, a twelve-inch ductile iron line was put in underneath the box culvert. And because of its age and its longevity, ductile iron will give you at least a good fifty years. Um, we felt that we would be able to investigate the cost of going all the way down to Mill Street. It's a lot more water main, um, and it requires some pretty heavy-duty excavating to get down to the ductile iron. Um, but we wanted to at least put a cost in front of council, uh, which is what you have here. So the estimate that we have, and this is based off of the, uh, unit pricing that we already had in place with the contractor, Chuck Kimes, um, for the additional excavation work, uh, attaching to the ductile iron, and then extending the water main replacement all the way down to Mill Street is an additional four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, the, obviously the value of being able to replace that line, if you recall, just in the last twelve months, uh, it broke twice right in front of the library. Um, this is an older main, it needs to go. Uh, the funds were not allocated, but there are funds available, um, if council would like to see this work done. Um, this would be, uh, adopted as a change order to the project, which would have funded the additional water main work, um, that would go from the six hundred block all the way down to Mill Street. Um, there is some, uh, there are, uh, obviously a breakdown on the line items, uh, there for your review. Uh, there are also, uh, drawings that show the additional water main work in your packets, uh, and I'm happy to, to answer any questions.
Two questions.
Yeah.
I don't understand half that word you just said, ducting something, so Mike Cook's level. We're making water quality better?
Yep.
And where's exactly where this additional money's coming from, so I know where it's coming from?
We would, we would take this from Water Capital Reserve, um, which is where we funded the work that's actually being done as part of the project.
Greg. What about the, what Mike was just saying, the, the ductile iron?
Mm-hmm.
Um, why would we connect on to that?
Ductile, um, it, it's a very, for lack of a, a better way or an engineer's way of, of saying, it's a very strong and durable, uh, type of iron pipe. Um, it, uh, is used in, uh, usually very deep situations. It's also used in areas where you had a lot of traffic, a lot of vibration. Um, when, when the city put it in, uh, and we were fortunate, uh, because, uh, we were able to find the original design, uh, because the original dot design was done by the same engineers that designed the phase one, uh, project, uh, of West Main's reconstruction. So they were able to dig through their archives and come up with the spec on it. Uh, and we were able to determine that, one, the age of the pipe wasn't that old, but we knew what type of pipe it was. So, um, it is a very strong, durable pipe. Um, uh, obviously the ends where we're putting the rest of the water main, uh, is, is PVC-type pipe. Um, but it's not buried twenty-six feet deep. Um, so that's the main reason why they use that type of pipe, uh, is because of the depth, uh, that it was, it was placed at when it was installed, you know, seventeen years ago.
So, and that's what I, that was my next question, how old it is. But why do we need a water main twenty-six feet deep in the first place? Why wouldn't we just go right over the top of it?
Because the depth, there's not enough depth there, Jim. We checked, uh, we even investigated the idea of doing something like we did over on Central, where we built a berm up over the line because the line wasn't able to get deep enough. Um, there's just not enough room. You either, you either go, you, you have to go under it. That's our, really our only option.
So, so you're saying that, uh, just because of the contour of the ground, is that what's creating the twenty-six feet deep?
The box culvert. There's a large stormwater structure there.
There's a grate there.
It's the fee, it's the fee that eventually ends up out there behind South Second. So you can imagine the volume of water. We're going to go underneath it, but it's, it is a big box culvert and it, it, the, the directional bore that we would have, I mean, we can't go through it. That's the problem. We have to go under it. Um, and the only way we can do that is, is to get, to get underneath it. We, we stayed away from, on the initial design, we stayed away from doing the directional bore because the directional bore is, is easily, easily, uh, you know, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, when we found out on inspection and doing a little more research, we found out that the line that's already there underneath it is something that still has some serviceable life left in it. And I'm talking substantial serviceable life. I'm not talking, you know, five years or ten years. We're talking thirty years, um, that, that we would be able to utilize that and be able to fix the rest of the water main all the way down to Mill Street.
Greg, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, to add on to what Mike said, this is another good investment in infrastructure that may eliminate water problems like we're having now, uh, correct?
Correct.
And it seemed like there's a lot of viable options, but to make real clear for the citizens, our dealing the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe we budgeted, would not be disturbed towards the ongoing water issues that we had put the money back for, correct?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Yeah, and, and I'm going to, I'm going to keep not harping on it, but reassuring the citizens that we have put substantial amount of money back to do and do everything we can to fix what's going on. Uh, is that why they would have brown water over on South Third and Second, Matt? I had someone mention it to me today.
Uh, no, sir. That, that does not have, um, any bearing on that water over on.
Hmm, I've never heard of, uh, South Third Brown Water.
Uh, I, I, I think that is an isolated, um,
Okay.
problem, uh, with a, with a single property. I think that's that old car wash, is that, are we talking about the same thing right now?
No, no, it's a resident over by, uh, just a couple of blocks off of, uh, West Main there. So, so, but that's all I have. I can get with you later on that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hey, Greg, in reading about the duct tile, it looks like it's corrosive resistance and has a life of a hundred years. Huh, who would have thought?
It's only seventeen years old.
Yeah.
I, I know we don't want to talk about ductile iron anymore.
I'm happy to.
So, uh, if you're burying it twenty-six feet, there's nothing you could put in, in the ground that deep anyhow, except ductile iron, is there?
Pretty much.
Yeah. Cause otherwise you don't want to deal with, uh, breaks and cracks and stuff.
Right.
And PVC at twenty-six feet deep.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that sounds like a reasonable bid, uh.
Yeah, so the, the, the benefit of, of this is it's a change order of the project. It does add more time to the project. There's no doubt. All right, we're, we're talking adding probably minimum another forty-five to sixty days to the project. But, um, it kind of falls into the, if we're going to do it, we ought to do it right. Um, we, we got lucky because we found out what was there, um, and that it was something that we could use. Uh, otherwise, um, um, trying to add this amount of additional water main onto this project without finding this, again, tack another three hundred grand on top of this number here. And it was something that I know I wouldn't be comfortable bringing, bringing to council. Um, it would be just one of those things that we would have to figure out.
So does my, um, ductile iron, does it have, is it all mechanical fasteners?
Yes.
So it's all bolted together?
Yes.
At the flanges and stuff?
Hmm.
That's all I got.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve a, uh, the West Main Street Water Main Phase One.
Change order.
Change order.
So moved.
Motion's been made in seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Motion passes. Old business.
None, sir.
We have no old business. Councilman Boyer.
Seemed like, uh, the, uh, street department got out there pretty good this morning, uh, early. And even though we had a water main break, I know it pulled quite a few guys over to that. I just wanted to compliment the street department for getting out there and getting the streets salted. I know it's quite a job. I used to do it myself. Um, city's growing and we're getting a lot more businesses and houses and apartments being built. A lot of people moving down here. And, uh, just wanted to say I'm, I'm basically proud to be a councilman with all this going on with the city, Festus, Festus is growing. Um, good luck to Matt on your new job. Sound like you're going to have quite an undertaking. Been hearing about this on the Wednesday morning radio show.
Oh.
Uh, and this Friday, the Bloomsdale Bank, uh, having a grand opening. And it'll be from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, and I'm planning on, uh, attending that, and I think the mayor's going to be there.
It's this Friday.
This coming Friday, yes.
Yeah.
Jim, you, uh, plan?
Thank you, bud, yep.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Weiner.
Yes, sir. So, um, on the, uh, Edgewood situation, if, uh, Greg, would you mind, uh, telling me about, uh, what the OSP is? And, um, if we have an approximate timeline on having a system replaced over there?
So, um, I, I reached out to Jeff Barnard, uh, Brian Kanzeneri and, and Allison White, who all work for Burns and McDonnell. Uh, Burns and McDonnell are the ones that are doing, uh, our water master plan for us right now. Um, in order to get what they call an owner-supervised program permit, um, you need to file with the DNR every five years, um, so that you can, you can undertake these sorts of projects. Um, ironically, the only permits, uh, for the extension or replacement of, um, of, uh, water main in the city of Festus belong to, uh, DeBrecht, who are doing the apartments and tenant homes. So, uh, that, so I digress. Um, I talked with Jeff, uh, today. Uh, we would like to see, obviously Burns and Mack, they know some folks in Jefferson City, and that helps. Um, that we felt that we could expedite that permit and it could happen within a week. Um, obviously helping to make that review easy. Uh, they have committed to holding regular communication with Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Um, they have also, uh, a scope, um, set up for the design. Uh, I will be discussing that with them on Wednesday morning, uh, and, and I want to get rolling on this. So, once we have, uh, scope, uh, once we have essentially what we would call the time and material documents that we would need to get a contractor to come in and do the work, uh, we will be able to accelerate this. Um, so beyond telling you that they're working on that expedited permitting and they could have it within a week, uh, I have a meeting with them on Wednesday. Um, but, uh, as I've said to, as many of you who have asked, uh, and I'm happy to, uh, to say it to you tonight, all of you, uh, I'm committed to making sure that we get this done and we get it done quickly. I'm committed to making sure that we get this done and we get it done quickly. It's, it is, the results that we wanted from the ice pigging were not as we had hoped. So, we were ready to go, obviously having the on-call engineer list. We had talked earlier about it being an important step for us to have, but I didn't want to wait. We already had a firm working on our water master plan, they're already under contract with us. We already know how much they're gonna charge us, so let's get going. So, I hope by the end of the week, I would be able to give you some positive news in relation to us having our O S P permit, and that I would be able to hopefully provide you some dates as far as getting a contract, getting contractor under contract. And let's just, let's just start tearing it up, let's, let's start putting Water Main in the ground.
I know that everyone over in that area is deeply concerned, and if we can get in there and do this quickly, I know it will relieve, as a as a constituent said to me, the emotional, physical, financial, and health strain that they're all having over there. So, please expedite as quickly as possible. Appreciate your, your help with that, and hopefully, the sooner the better. Thank you, sir.
All righty, Councilman Cook?
Greg, to jump on what Brian was talking about real quick. So, when we get the master plan, we get the O S P permit, and Burns and McDonald gets going, have you considered at all, I know you, you're gonna personally handle this, have you considered at all breaking this up in bid project, so we can get multiple contractors out there to get this done?
That's a good question, Mike. No, that is a good question. So, huh, okay. Earning your three-hundred dollars. I will, in my call on Wednesday, ask about scaling it, because obviously, we're talking from nose to tail, if you go from Rosemary, Zach and I had, Zach Rundell, our, our water sewer foreman, obviously, it's something that's important. Everybody that works for the City of Festus takes this very seriously, and we want to make sure that we get it done as quickly as possible. So, Zach and I met on Friday, he's, he's already considered the tie-in points, where we start, where we end, what gets replaced, what stays in the ground. Obviously, there's older infrastructure that connects to newer infrastructure, so knowing where we're gonna start and end is important. But yeah, I think it's worthwhile having that discussion, is it, it, will it happen quicker if we take smaller bites? So, yeah, I will, I will discuss that Wednesday.
Okay, and when we did the ice pigging, we had that Water Main break by the school. I, I was just by there and took some water and stuff for the guys, and, yeah.
It broke twice.
They were, they were knee-deep, and they were working hard, and I felt bad. It was cold, it was wet, sloppy, and, I mean, it, they, everybody was in that hole working. And I just wanted to tell them great, greatly, I appreciate it, we've all taken a black eye discreditingly. I have just as much culpability in this water issue as anybody else. We're on the council, I should have had a better handle on it. I can accept my responsibility in it, but I just want to make sure the crews understand it, I, we greatly appreciate it. Because we set policy, we give direction, and I fell flat on my face on that. And then Doug, my vote no was not a no because of Jefferson County Sewer. I totally support this. My no vote was strictly, I just need, I just want a little more time before we did it. I have all the faith in the world in Jefferson County Sewer, and when the sale is complete, I am gonna water the crap out of my yard, because my sewer rates are fixed. Mayor, that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Dennis?
Uh, yeah, I just want to reiterate the, the good work that's done by all of our departments, when every duty calls, be it Water Main break, the streets, getting the salt down. And reiterate, we, we approved the money for this water issue. Greg is working on accelerating it, and we're gonna get people over and get this fixed. And I can't imagine what they're going through, but we do care, and to reiterate to anything that we can do for them folks, we still have the bottled water, and we're talking with them about other issues that we've done in the past, all that's reiterated, and they have someone they can contact to, to, if they're not getting this message, to let them know. Sometimes the message doesn't get out. But I do, I do think that we're really trying to fix this, and probably is kind of hard to swallow a new pickleball court when your water's brown. And it's not that we don't care, because this is the best council I've ever served in, and going on my twenty years. Like I said, we've got the money, that's the hard part, we're working on the permits and the engineering to get over there, and I was talking to one of the guys today, they were over there working on the hydrants, it's cold out, but we need, we need to get this done, and I believe we're doing as fast as possible. Not to leave out that we know we have some street issues, we have some rough spots in our streets, but they're already planning on what to fix, just as soon as we can get the materials to fix it. I would hope that we do like maybe a little triage of streets on the plan, that if some are worse than others, and I believe they do that, just to reiterate, we, we are gonna get going as soon as the weather breaks, we hear what people are saying. Like Mike said, we take, we take responsibility, we feel bad for it, but we're gonna continue to work in all of our departments that care about our citizens, and try to get this resolved as quick as possible. So, that's all I have, sir.
All righty, sir, thank you. Councilman Collier?
I just want to congratulate Matt on his new job, and thanks for everything that you've put into our city. While I was reading the, or looking over the bills and that, I noticed some expenses on the Red Barn renovation whereabouts, are we at on that as far as progress?
Happy to give an update. The, we did get an updated timeline from Bond Architects late last week. We've been working with surveyors and utility locators. Because of the age of the property, and there is really no document that shows us where everything in the ground is, we did have to hire a, a private utility comp, a private utility locate company to come in. They started some work last week, they hopefully will finish up this week. And once we have that in the hands of the architects, we have talked about some concepts in design, but nothing set in stone yet. Just because we realize we're, there's gonna be obviously cost, every time you add something, it costs, and every time you take something away, the cost remains the same. So, the, the barn is, is progressing, we're hoping that we have bid documents for review and to put those out for bid in the spring.
Okay, thank you. I also would like to really agree with all the other council people on the water issue. I think that's something that we do need to get on, and get on as quickly as possible, weather permitting, and try and see if we can solve all the problems that we've been having with it. And that's all I got.
All right, sir, thank you. Councilwoman Templeton?
Just on the water issue again, I know is, we are making progress finally with it, but the more it's out there, the more people are saying, hey, I have this on my street too. So, I didn't know if there's some sort of, and would be one of them, that came to me today. Has discolored water, so as, just making sure that we're being as proactive as we can to say, yep, we, we're trying to tackle it. So, because it's just gonna be more and more, and sometimes when you loosen up one side, it's gonna go somewhere else, so just to be mindful of that. The other thing would be, thank you to the police department for dealing with Barber Place at six-hundred block. Some very frustrated people that live over there with that house. Are we close to being able to secure that, or?
I know on our side of it, he is, he is working, he's calling when he is in there working. I know he's been working with Mark also as far as trying to get it back up to code to where something can be done with it. We've been trying to keep an eye on it overnight too, because some neighbors are reporting some people in there overnight. So, we've been making patrols by there to try to see if we can find somebody in the house after hours also. And so far, we haven't, but that's not.
Yeah, the, the last, the last I had heard is that they were parking on the Walgreens parking lot and walking up into the house.
So. We did relay that to our officers also, so.
And I, and I, and I talked, I, I told, it's, there are two, there are however many people sneaking into something, so they're doing very well, you know, being discreet that they're there, but, you know, I'm just glad we're trying to, you know, to go after it and give those people some peace of mind. I don't want to see people leaving our city because of a vacant house on a very small cul-de-sac that they can't get away from, so. Other than that, good luck, Matt. Enjoy Columbia. Tell my daughter I said hi.
Councilman Vins?
Can't really say too much different than what everybody else already said, and congratulations, Matt. And like I said, I feel for the people with the water issues and everything else that's been going on. So, that's about it, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Tenon.
I'm just kind of excited that it's bittersweet with me about selling the sewer treatment plant, but I, I, I don't, I don't even know why, it's a negative thing with me, because I think it's the best thing we could do, but still, there's a little part of me that doesn't like the idea, but I'm just happy that it, it's gone pretty smooth, and, and we're gonna go through with it. The, I'm excited about the water, being able to utilize some of that money and, and make that happen without putting a burden on the city. And, and I'm proud of everybody on this council, how we all agree on the majority of things we talk about. Matt, congratulations. I don't know who's gonna be sitting next to me now. And Michelle, thanks for getting all that work done with the banks and everything on that deal. That's all I got, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. I am tickled to death that we got this sewer treatment plant. And that you all decided that we need to do that, because we do need to do it. And I'm also excited to get things going on Edgewood, get that water taken care of, because as everybody stated, they, the residents expect us to do something about it, and they want to see the results. I'm pretty sure the first time we bring it back home in there and start tearing the streets up, they're gonna be tickled to death, even though it's gonna, you know, hard for them. We're making progress. As has been said, the city's getting bigger. And I am, I'm proud of what we do, and I'm proud of the city. And even in the hospital, I made sure that they knew that I was the mayor of Festus, where Festus was, and what we're doing down here. Although it didn't do any good for me to say I was the mayor of Festus, I mean, maybe they only stuck me two or three times less than what they did. But anyway, we're doing a good job. You all are doing a good job. And that's what they elected us for. And good luck to, you know, we have a while, so start campaigning, those of you that have to. But that's all I have. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.